Good evening and welcome to the May 21st, 2018 Board of Selectmen meeting. On the agenda tonight, we have public service announcements. At 6:35, we have a public hearing, amendment of propane Sturge tank license, Osterman propane on behalf of Public House. Then we have a discussion, resident complaint about a dock location. And then we have an application for a dock permit, 46 Burgess School Road, Department head reports, Police Department. Under that, we have an appointment of a full-time dispatcher. We have the Building Department. Then Town Administrator's update, all business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes, and Citizens Forum, and then we will adjourn. Does anyone have any public service announcements? Priscilla?
Can we ask for a moment of silence for the loss in Santa Fe High School?
Certainly. Okay, thank you. Anything else, Priscilla? Chase?
No.
Mike?
A little over a week ago, we lost another member of the Greatest Generation, John Gendron, is on the honor roll in front of the town hall. He won two Bronze Stars during World War II. He was involved in the invasion of Normandy. Hundred and first airborne.
God rest his soul.
Mary?
No.
Just a reminder that the Memorial Day Parade is Monday. It will begin at the old fire station, corner of 148 and 20. Town meeting is Monday, June 4th, at 7 o'clock at the senior high school. It's normally the day the Board of Selectmen meet. We will not meet here. We do have a short meeting before the town meeting. Concerts on the Common will begin June 14th. The schedule will be on the website. Okay, is it? We've got a minute before 6:35. Not time to really do. So we'll wait half a minute. We can't start early, we can start late.
Memorial Day? This week.
What?
Memorial Day, everything's next week.
Well, I didn't parade now.
Parade and everything, yeah.
You got you.
Yeah, you?
No, I'm riding.
You're riding.
Right. In a sports car?
Yes.
I'm walking.
If I walked the whole ambulance, fire truck, everything would be out there.
Be a burden on our town services.
That's right. I used to walk, I used to walk. Okay, I do have 6:35, and we do have a public hearing. Do you have the notice, Mary?
Yeah. Hold on. Take care. The town of Stirbridge, Board of Selectmen, in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 148, Section 13, hereby give notice that a public hearing will be held on May 21, 2018, at 6:35 PM at the Stirbridge Town Hall, 308 Main Street, Stirbridge, on the application of the Public House Inn for an amendment to the existing license for storage tanks for flammable materials located at 277 Main Street, Stirbridge.
Okay. Could the proponents please come down?
I was in your sister hotel the other day.
Which one?
The Hawthorne.
Hawthorne?
Okay, and could you please introduce yourself for the record and folks at home?
Michael Glick, general manager, Public House.
Marlena Damski, manager, Osterman Propane, South Berth.
Okay, and could you just explain, please, what it is you want to do?
Sure. They have current storage there of 5,000 gallons of propane. We're currently looking to upgrade that to 10,000 gallons to accommodate their heating in hot water for their new building that they're going up and tying everything in together for both the current location of tank installation. We're gonna omit that and tie it into this new install. I have some plans if anybody needed to see copies of plans.
Okay, would anyone like a copy?
Okay.
Does anybody on the board have a question?
Madam Chair?
We do.
I don't have a question, but I just want to let you know that this was reviewed by the fire chief.
You beat me to it. We do have a letter from the fire chief. He has reviewed the application for the amended license. I concur that this amendment is appropriate and respectfully suggest to be approved and issued. So with that, is there anyone willing to make a motion?
So moved.
To close the public hearing.
Oh, I forgot, it's a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public? Okay.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Okay, is there anyone making a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Great, thank you very much.
Place looks beautiful.
Great, thank you.
It really does.
It's ahead of schedule.
That's what it says. Good for you.
Exactly.
What about under budget?
That's not the case, actually.
Is it gonna be red, like the picture shows?
Yes, the section that's going up white currently, that back section, you know, that's the product before it's painted.
Okay, so it's gonna be like a red bar?
That last section that sits on an angle like that, that four sides will be red.
Nice.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good night. Okay, next, we have a discussion and a dock permit application. Would the proponent for the application please come forward?
We would ask you to sign the sign-in sheet and...
Would you please introduce yourself for the record and the audience at home?
My name is Jamie Jalbert, Burgess School Road, Stirbridge. My sister Joy and my brother John.
Madam Chair, in the agenda package, you have a letter of complaint dated March 7th, I'm sorry, May 7th, 2018, to the Board of Selectmen regarding the property at 44 Burgess School Road, and I will turn it over to the petitioners to explain to the Board of Selectmen your complaint against your neighbors.
I have, well, thank you for having us in, and sorry we have to be here. Let's see. We have a dock that had been in the family, been a part of 40-plus years, that we've been using the same dock with numerous boats in the same position. Our neighbors who inherited the property several years ago, their mother passed away, moved up and over the course of last year had basically attempted to bully, if you will, my nephew in parking our boat on the opposite side of the dock, which is something that we have done forever. In turn, he had, he came up, and I believe it was March 2nd, and filed authority permit for, to move his dock and put it to 15 feet, which is supposed to be 15 feet, to our property. He filed the property line reg, rules of 15 feet, first of all. I have pictures if anyone would be interested in seeing them. And at this point now, where the dock is lo, where his dock is located, we cannot enter or exit our dock. We cannot put our boat, basically, it's blocked out, right, to enter and exit our dock where we have been parking for 40-plus years.
Okay, now you said the 15-foot requirement, where did you get that?
The, as a measurement, we have a fence, I can show you the picture if you'd like.
Sure.
That fence is our fence, and it's one foot beyond the actual property line closer to us. The boat that's in the water with the jet ski is their dock, which for, again, 40-plus years, has also always been parked on the opposite side of the property. Never an issue until current. Now, we measured from the dock to the fence, and it is 15 feet to our fence, which is one foot approaching on the rules, if you will. That, that's, you know, I'm not here to split hairs, I'm here to be able to use our dock, which we've been using for 40-plus years, in the same manner that we have.
No, I do believe we had the same concern when the other people were in for their dock permit. In my mind, this is something that should be able to be settled amongst neighbors. I mean, these are docks that can go in and out of the water. And how much frontage do you have on the lake?
About 72 feet.
72.
Okay, and do we know how much the other person has?
They have about, they have about the same.
The property was split down the middle.
Okay, now, also though, is, I don't believe we can regulate property lines in everything. As I said, I do believe it's something that should be settled amongst the parties friendly. I mean, you are neighbors, you do have to live with each other, next to each other. I don't know how the board feels about that issue. Priscilla?
Based on what we had a few years ago, that we tried to help neighbors resolve their issues as best we could. We tried that approach first, because it's, it's hard for us to mandate one to the other, and you create hard feelings all the way around. And we had, as the chair had said, we did ask them to try to mitigate it themselves and come up with a happy medium together. And if, my feeling would be, if you could do that, I don't know if you've tried it, but if you could do that, it's a better resolution, because you're both agreeable to it.
There's been no discussion, it's just, the dock showed up there one weekend, and it hasn't, we haven't discussed it, we, I agree.
I, yeah, I think you should talk to your neighbor before you come, in a sense, you know, I'm glad you came, that's not my point, but I think before we say any, just, this is just me, before you say anything to that, I think, talk to your neighbor, and then if you can't come to a resolution, then we have another issue. But I think most of the time, in fact, the other time that we, that we're thinking about, it was worse than this, and they managed to figure it out. So I, I think you can do that.
Now, in the rules, I believe there's a line or a statement saying that the being able to enter and exit your dock is a property, a budding property can't block you from doing that.
Right.
Do you have a copy of our regulations?
I have.
Because, oh, no, okay, we were gonna supply you with it in case you do not have it, but you do have one.
So, I'll take, I'll gladly take another dock.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see you guys settle it between neighbors before it comes to us. I just, I reviewed our bylaws, and just a little food for thought for everybody, the third bylaw, which says no dock will be placed on or in front of landowner by another without the landowner's permission, and I understand that's a dock, but when you tie a boat to the dock, I kind of feel like that becomes the dock essentially as well. So I mean, just something of food for thought, you know, that if that boat's tied to the dock on someone else's property...
Can I just say something about that?
That's part of the dock.
They've done the same thing to the neighbor on the other side for the last 40 years. Now, all of a sudden, it's an issue with us. If they had just left their dock where it was, there wouldn't be any issue at all right now.
Well, we would have to check what the information they supplied us when they applied for their dock permit, to see if they did follow what they supplied. And, you know, if it's going to be a continued issue in the future, maybe we do need to clarify on the dock permits, that issue about the dock and the boat next to it. Mary?
Well, I don't disagree with anything that has been said. As far as that goes, I mean, we have limited resources as a town, so if two neighbors are handling it in a neighborly way and don't complain, I know you indicated that your other neighbor had it parked here, and that was on the other person's property, they were obviously acquiescing enough that they didn't come before us, so we didn't have to resolve it. You know, so when that happens, they, they've reached some kind of their own agreement. Your neighbor did come before us, and his request did fall within our regulations. They didn't violate our regulations in any way. Maybe, you know, I agree with Chase, we need to go and, and maybe hone them even better, but there was nothing about his permit request either that violated anything. So, and I know you, you know, it's unfortunate, I know you said that it was grandfathered in, you know, and that town administrator is like three administrators ago, so, I mean, I don't disbelieve you in any way, but we're not in a position to say, you know, yes, it was grandfathered in. I don't think, what's that?
It's a Board of Selectmen decision, too.
Yeah, yeah, and we don't know what was, because I was looking at this after, and I tried to see, like, on the regulations, we don't have anything that said, you know, like in the building codes, it says, you know, if it predates you're grandfathered in unless you have substantial change, and then you have to bring them up. We don't have anything about being grandfathered in, so I'm not saying that you weren't told that, it's just not part of our regulations. So when your neighbor came before us, he, you know, fell within our guidelines in terms of, you know, I had a question on the picture.
Oh.
Let me just, I just want to make sure I understand whose property is whose. So this one's yours, right? Okay, so are you able to park your boat on this side without difficulty, on your land, on this side of your property?
More shallow on that side, it can be done, but it's more shallow. When we park, we have, we have each property, the neighbor and ourselves, we have about 79, 79, 79 feet, I believe it is, 72 feet of water space, the frontage. They have, their waterfront is completely open, they have complete water access on the 179 feet. We have about 179 feet. If we go on ours, we have maybe 30 feet if we put the boat on that side, because we have trees, and we can't, we can't do any water, and we can't change that, that water access. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It's like, we have a very, we have very little access to the water from our side, where they have the whole 72 feet is wide open. So that's what I'm trying, we're trying to do is, we have, our mother is 86 years old, and she needs access, she likes to sit on that dock.
Yeah.
The dock that's in, and they like, just, just to sink their feet in the water and cool off.
Yeah.
But it's just, our, our waterfront is minimal. If we put the boat on that side, now we have even less.
Of course, even according to that picture, though, it would look if you put your boat...
It's clearly gonna be on the water in front of their property.
It would still be, it would be in front of the other people's property.
Yeah.
That's what the gentleman came in to complain about.
That's what, it's concerned. Maybe you want to talk about, because these property lines, I mean, you, you're saying that you have about the same amount of waterfrontage, but actually, yours is less usable, for lack of a better term.
Correct.
And you might just want to talk to them about that, maybe you can, again, what Selectmen Jim has said, and our chair said, reach some kind of agreement, because they may not be aware of that, maybe they'll be willing to, but they have a legitimate dock permit at this point, they, they do. Maybe you can talk to them, though, because they say in their letter to us that, you know, there might be a misunderstanding about how many feet you have, because I think they indicated you have 140 feet, and they have, hold on. It is upsetting to us, that's not telling you anything that you don't know, because you're upset as well, so, that Ms. Jalbert has 140 feet of waterfrontage compared to our 77 feet.
They, they think we own around the corner, and we don't.
Okay, so, but, okay, so maybe you should, you know, clarify a little bit, because from their perspective, they think you have a lot of opportunity to park elsewhere, at least double what they have, and if you don't, maybe they will, you know, reach, reach some kind of compromise with you, because right now, their permit is legitimate under our regulations, so.
Right, so, you know, as far as that issue, that's about all we can do, is, you know, just advise you to try to work it out with the neighbor. Now, as far as your dock permit, I really don't think we can accept it, because we do not have...
It's not that dock, it's not that dock.
I think she knows.
It's a separate.
I think she knows that.
Yeah, no, your dock permit.
Yes.
Your new one.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think we can address that, because the application, we have no drawings, we don't know how big it is, square footage, how long it extends into the water, plus the fact that our bylaws, our rules and regulations say only one dock per property, and you already have a dock.
Right.
So based on that, I for one don't think we can address this permit. How's the rest of the board feel?
Well, again, once, the person that I did speak to a year ago or so said that because there's a dock grandfathered in, as long as you're within the regulations for the new dock, it shouldn't be an issue.
Well, I don't know who you spoke to.
I forget the gentleman's name, and it might be someone that's not...
Yeah, but...
Wasn't me.
Yeah, no, but I mean, whoever you spoke to, we don't know, and obviously, maybe they did not have the correct information, because if you've looked at our dock requirements, I mean, you don't, you haven't given us anything that's required.
Okay.
Plus that one, about one dock per property.
Okay.
Whether the other one's grandfathered or not, that shouldn't count.
Okay, then...
I thought, okay.
No, go ahead, Joy.
I thought as long as it wasn't interfering with the neighbors, and there's no neighbor on that side.
No, it's nothing about that, no. One dock per property.
And you know, I know the neighbor did say, which is probably true, I haven't been on your lake in a long time, that a lot of, you probably don't want to, you know, snitch on other neighbors, but he indicated that there are other properties with two docks on the lake, so that's, I don't know that, if that, that's probably true, whatever, but we don't...
Plus, it's true, because a lot of people do what they want to do.
Right, so, but what I'm saying is, we don't have a police officer that's just assigned to the lakes.
We're not saying anything about that.
That would go around to every single house and monitor this. We, we tend to, you know, monitor, no, I know, but we tend to monitor it when people complain, so if there are two docks on other properties, and one of those neighbors came in, then I think we would have to ask that those, whatever houses are not complying to, like, move one of their docks, because we're kind of limited to what...
No, we don't want to cause trouble.
It says one dock per parcel of land.
No, yeah, that's paragraph four, no more...
Yes, adjacent to one parcel of land.
How big does a parcel of land have to be? What is the...
There's no requirement, you obviously have a parcel of land.
Right.
It may not meet our zoning requirements now as a bill of law, or whatever, but it's a parcel of land that does have a house on it. Do you know your acreage?
It's like a third of an acre.
So you have another parcel of land in addition?
No.
She's just talking.
Which, if she sold me a three-foot, like, three-foot parcel of land, isn't that a dock?
That wouldn't count, I don't think that would count as a parcel of land.
Yeah, it's not.
That's why I was asking, okay, parcel of land.
I think they're trying to limit...
It depends the zone you're in.
Right.
And I think it also is trying to limit the congestion on the lakes. These predated, like, when I was a member, but when I read that, I think it's, it's an attempt to control...
Your parcel now doesn't fit the requirement in, I believe you're rural residential, yeah, it's three-quarters of an acre, it's a half acre if you have town water and sewer. I believe you have sewer, but do you have town water? Okay, but that would be a half acre, but we don't list it under the requirements, what a parcel is.
Now, that poses another situation, because we're gonna remove the dock that you are not gonna issue a permit on, because we can only have one dock.
Right.
Which brings us back to the grandfathered in, which, the pontoon boat, which is a couple of years old, has doors that are on the left-hand side, so in order for us to park it there, we have to park it on the side that he is stopping us from entering the dock.
Well, again, that's between you and your neighbors, and not for the board to decide.
You don't want to...
You could, you could move your dock, you could back the boat in.
You don't want to move the dock further away from your property line? You don't want to move it over so you're not, like, right on your property line?
Once again, the situation is, is, there's a sandbar, if you will, right in front of our property, if you ever go onwind, you know, and drain water off, it should way out from our house first, and then it's still off to the sides, which, to me, doesn't make any sense, because there's a, there's a dock, too, now he has to raise his motor, because his requirements is perfect.
Yeah, but again, again, it's a neighbor problem that we hope, we hope it can be settled amicably by both parties, okay? Okay, thank you for coming in, and good luck.
But if you did want to move it, I know you don't think it's conducive to that, then, you know, we're ready, we're ready to listen to that. But right now, it, he's got a legitimate dock based on our, our regulations, so...
Can someone certify?
Mr. Goman, excuse me?
I promised I wasn't gonna say anything, but now I feel I have to. Can I, for you, Madam Chair, may I ask a question? The dock that your pontoon boat is on, are there sandbar issues on that, in that area of the, of the lake?
It's very shallow in the front.
But you don't have any problems with the pontoon boat on that dock where it is currently? You don't? It just seems to me, if they would abandon the old dock and get a permit for the new dock where the pontoon boat is, they could use both sides of the dock, and they wouldn't have a problem with their neighbor. I'm not...
Oh, no, I know, there's a couple of ways they can work it out.
Is there, if that is the case, is there a reason we could not have a couple of extensions? I built that dock back in the 70s.
Well, it, it can't exceed 200 square feet, and it can't extend into the lake more than 25 feet.
Perfect, so what I'm getting at is...
But we would expect to see...
Sure. What I'm getting at is, we will use the new dock, which is what we've asked for permission for.
Where the pontoon boat is.
And we will put a couple of extensions, and not to violate any of the regulations, which would still allow my mother to be able to go in and sit in the dock, and which is primarily all I want to do is, is have that happen.
Yeah, well, you could absolutely do that.
We don't get all that information together, the summer hasn't quite begun yet, so...
So if it's not all the way out, it's not considered a dock? Like, if we leave, like, the, the older dock in, like, just one or two sections, can we leave that and still do the...
I think we're nickel and diming it here.
No, you'd have to take out the...
The dock would have to...
All of it?
Yes, the dock would have to come out in order to put a new dock in, kind of have a dock and a half.
But I think, I don't want to, I don't want to misremember what you told me. I think they have a concrete pad that's at the edge, along the, the edge of the water. I don't know, I don't think that the Selectmen would require them to remove the concrete pad.
No, of course not.
No, you'd have to go to...
No, just...
...concom and everything else.
Because that would be a nightmare.
No, I mean, that...
That would take a little too long, but, so I think...
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in, and good luck.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay.
Good night.
Okay, next, on the agenda, we have the Police Department Chief.
While the chief is coming up, I did just want to remind the Selectmen that the fire chief came in at the last meeting. His latest report that he didn't have at the last meeting is in your agenda package. If anyone has any questions about his report, just let me know, and I can relay them to the chief, who's not in attendance today. Thank you.
Good evening, Chief.
Oh, they forgot their pictures. I'll leave it for you. Are you gonna make an inspection? Can you catch them?
Yeah, they're probably taking the elevator. Oh, here.
I don't have the elevator yet. Take a picture.
We don't want the pictures. They got everyone.
Those two moved them back.
I know. At least we know they can, right?
Yeah, for what you do.
Nice guys, way to kick it in.
Everyone said it's quickest we've seen you two.
I'm almost proud of the guy, so that is...
We need a light there. I saw you put on the blue lights when you're leaving the room.
Hello, Jim.
Hello, good evening.
I have a backup of monthly reports. I have four of them because I missed our last appointment.
Yes, but.
So, I will go through January, February, March, and I apologize for the tardiness of April. I had an administrative assistant that was away on vacation, and so we're a little behind on getting that out.
Do we have April?
Yes, it's in the box.
Unfortunately, it came over today.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
So.
It's in our box.
Some of them have.
I can certainly take April, I can take April's questions the next time we meet.
Oh, no, that's okay.
It's okay.
You can start at the beginning.
Okay. We'll go through January. You know, of note, I want you to see that the Charter School in Old Sturbridge Village, we've started to participate in safety drills and promoting.
Thank you.
And establishing safety plans, critical incident management plans for over at the Charter School and getting our officers and neighboring departments familiar with the layout, the structure and the operations at that school. And we continue to work on that to this day with the Charter School. That, there's any questions on January?
Do you have any questions?
I apologize, Chase, because I don't think you will have January and February's reports.
I can get a copy of these.
No, no questions for me.
February, again, we continue with normal operations, pretty regular training. Questions on February?
Any questions?
In March, Sergeant Payne and the members of the Sturbridge Police Department began our Citizens Police Academy. It was quite successful and the.
How many in it this time?
Great question. I'm looking at them all, seats in front of me. I want to say 18. It was a large class.
That's really good.
It was a really good class and it's, if we run them every year, we have three or four people. If we hold off a year, alternate years, we, we tend to do much better. Another successful academy that we run annually is our Student Police Academy. This year, one of our newer officers took charge of that and has done a remarkable job up there with the students at the high school and their democracy class up there, the dynamics of democracy that they have. And that was Officer Jansen who was leading that and that, both those courses have continued to be very successful. And recently, on May 1st, our CPA, our Citizens and Police Academy graduated. So, we're, we're pretty happy about that and it was, it was a great showing and all around a great program. And we're happy that we're able to continue that. We also did drills at the high school with our regional partners in law enforcement and working with the schools during the month of, of March and into April as well. Our critical incident management plans and our ALIS protocols. So, that would be what I have for March.
I just have a question in general because it shows up in a couple, a couple of them. I know I asked you this question years ago, but I forget. What is the difference between larceny by asportation and larceny by concealment?
I believe that legal definitions are different in the actual statutes themselves. I think one is to go ahead and take something by shoplifting or taking it, taking it openly. And another is taking the tag off of an item. Instead of being 2595, they change it down to 295 on the tag. So, they try to conceal the actual cost of, of, of the product. It's, it's somewhat confusing. That's the best definition that I can give of. And I know they fall under the same chapter and section in the statute. I just believe that shoplifting charges and regular larceny charges are separated that way in our records management system.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Are we, are we on March?
We are.
Okay. So, I just note the year, those are the year-to-dates, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, we've had quite like almost three times as many drug arrests. What, what kind of drug arrests were they? Do you know? Like what kind of drugs?
I could go in and break, break this down, but no, I can't give you. It'll, it would take me a few minutes to research.
No, I just thought you knew.
Information here, I just don't.
Off the top of your head. It's okay. It's just like 15 versus six. So, it's just quite a bit more. Actually, everything's up. Calls for service are up significantly.
Motor vehicle citations.
Twenty, 25% increase in calls for service.
Yeah, so a lot.
Remember, the calls for service are any activity that involve a police officer response or an action by any persons in the department. So, that could be, certainly could be due to the three new officers that we have on board that are.
Ambitious?
That are extremely ambitious and, and we were shorthanded this time last year. So, I think that that has a significant, that plays a significant role in it. But if you, if, if you want, I can get you that.
I was just curious how hard the drugs were. Like what kind of drugs?
I can shoot you an email. I can shoot an email to you.
Right.
Just let you know.
Just curious, sure.
And I'll take care of that for you.
Got a few more motor vehicle citations as well.
They are, but as I've explained to the board before, that's, that, that number is representative of all citations written, whether they're a written warning or whether they're an actual money citation. And just to give you an idea, in comparison of the traffic stops that we've had, we had, we had 275 verbal warnings given, warnings given out, 394 citations given out and only 90 money violations given out for that time. So, we do spend a lot of time, you know, making sure that everybody has, has a chance. And if you, if you look consistently, I think you get that number. We, we give you that number in the report. It's on the page with performance measures. And if you look at that, that's pretty consistent across the month. How the, how the written warnings, the verbal warnings, the actual money citations are broken down. But again, you know, that's the activity of the officers that we have out there. We have a, we have a pretty, pretty active group out there now. And be, having most all of our officers on board, it tends to allow us to get more of those activities completed. So, are there any other questions on that? In April, I'm sorry, you know, I know that you've taken, you've only had a couple of minutes to take a look at it. We had some driver's education classes at the high school, some pre-prom events up there as well, some seatbelt pledges, et cetera, as we got closer to the prom season. There is an increase in the activities that has been consistent as, as you had mentioned. And the rest of our police academies continued and as they were, one of them wrapped up and the other is going to be wrapping up.
Okay, any questions on April?
Thank you. I have one more item. Through Chair to Town Administrator, I recommended. We recently lost one of our full-time dispatchers to the town of Southbridge where she took on a similar position over there, which created a vacancy in our full-time dispatching staff. So, we put the job out. We had numerous applications. We had some pretty qualified people that applied for the position. We interviewed five very, very strong candidates. And one of those candidates happened to be one of, two of the five happened to be existing part-time dispatchers that we have. And one of those dispatchers is Tanya Maloney, who, whose recommendation I bring forward tonight. Tanya started with us in August of 1999 as a full-time dispatcher. She worked with us from August of 1999 to March of 2015 in this full-time capacity. In March of 15, she took an opportunity to go to the State Police Regional Dispatch Center in New Braintree. However, she did maintain her employment here in the town of Sturbridge as a part-time dispatcher and did put in part-time dispatch hours with us from March of 15 to present. Tanya was interested in coming back to work with us full-time. We had the open position. We interviewed for the open position. Given, given her qualifications, her experience and her standing within the town as an employee, she was chosen as a top candidate for the position. So, I would ask that Tanya Maloney be appointed as a full-time dispatcher for the town of Sturbridge Police Department effective May 21st of 2018 at her, at her current rate of 2398 an hour.
Okay, any questions from the board? Their motion then, so moved? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? On paper? Mike, sometimes you look like you're going to say something.
I was waiting for you to call the vote.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. And of the, of the remaining three candidates that aren't employed, I've been notified by two because I was interested in seeing if any of the candidates would be interested in helping us out in our part-time staff. And two of them already shown interest in being a part-time dispatcher, so they may be for you at some point.
That'll be good.
We were fortunate with the candidate pool we did have this time.
I have a question because I'm not sure your meeting was in April or May, so I think it's still within your coming forward tonight. So, we understand that you, you had a meeting with the superintendent about.
Last Monday evening.
Okay, so it was in May. So, and we got a memo saying it was very fruitful and so.
It was. It was. The, the superintendent had reached out to talk to the five chiefs in, in the Tantasca Regional School District about our safety plans about the school resource officer program. And we revisited the subject and we discussed several options that were available. And I've had several ideas brewing within, within the confines of the circle of police chiefs in the five towns. And we've recommended taking a new approach to the school resource officer program up at Tantasca. We hope that it's something that we can look at and this is something, the terminology is something I've stolen from emergency management. But I'm taking a lot of the framework from emergency management where we're going to look at this as a more whole community approach. Each one of these elementary schools in the five towns, ultimately by grade six, are sending their children to Tantasca Junior and Senior High School. However, we have no continuity with those children from the beginning until the end of their elementary school days. And when we get, when the kids come into the school up at Tantasca Junior and Senior High. So, we're hoping by collaborating our efforts between the police departments and all the communities that will standardize our critical incident response plans for all the schools so that they're, they're of a similar nature, they're of a similar response plan. So, that when we have to share resources in between the communities, Holland isn't doing it any different than Brimfield, isn't doing any different than Brookfield and so forth. We feel that the full-time police officer at the school, Tantasca Junior and Senior High should be from Sturbridge. However, we feel that the police officers from all the communities should be co-teaching, co-mentoring within the Tantasca community. And that means our school resource officers from Sturbridge going into Holland and Brimfield and Wales Elementary Schools and vice versa, their officers coming into our schools to co-teach and to partner with the school resource officer program and to develop that relationship, not only with the students, but with the administrations at an earlier age, at an earlier phase. So, that when we, when, when there's children going up to the junior and senior high school, this transition's seamless with respect to our school resource officer program. And people aren't shocked to see Sturbridge and Brimfield and Holland and Wales interacting and working their uniforms, the police uniforms and the individual faces, interacting and providing the services that we would offer through the school resource officer program. The benefits of the program were outlined and given to the, given to the school by myself previous times. And we hope to build off of that. I hope to provide the superintendent with a bullet list of goals, visions that we have and hopes that we can start working towards that direction. The individual school committees of each one of the five towns and building a partnership, not only with the individual school committees, but with the regional school committee as well. Because we do all have the same goal in mind. We do have the same ends in mind. And we hope that by taking this whole community approach, we get everybody involved and we get everybody participating. And I think that if we work together as a team, the five communities, I think that's going to be more successful. Instead of hey, Sturbridge is going to do this, or hey, Brookfield's going to do this, or hey, you know, Holland's going to be responsible for this. So, that we're, you know, that we, the ultimate goal in mind is, is to make sure that the children are going to be safe, that make sure that they're making great decisions, make sure that people respect each other, make sure that we're that true asset, that true resource to the school community that we want to be as police officers.
So, can we be, oh, I'm sorry.
No, but Mayor, you still ask.
Okay, um, thank you. So, can we be cautiously optimistic that something will be done for the next school year? That there will be some officer in place at the junior high or high school? I mean, I think it's great that you're, you're talking and everything. It's just that now another school year went by and we're going to, is that the goal? I guess.
I hope to build, I hope to build on it.
No, no, I understand that, Chief. You've always.
And I know that at some point, there's going to come discussion about funding. I, there's going to be discussion about the hiring of a police officer for full-time up at this, up at the regional high school campus. The amount of participation from the other communities, I know at some point. But I think that if we have, if we get the school committees, if we get the communities, if we get the parents, if we get all these people buying into this at the same time, then I think that there'll be less reluctance to participate financially in setting up the hours that are needed in Brimfield and setting up the hours that are needed in Holland to contribute from these other communities as well as from ours. And, you know, so I'm cautiously optimistic that we'll be ready by the school year, but it'll take some work and it'll take some agreements and it really will, we have to continue with the discussions that we, we started. We need to have as open and frank discussions as we can because we all have the same ends in mind. But we just have to make sure that we get there through the same course of action.
When is your next meeting?
As soon as I get that, as soon as I get that document done, we're going to put it, we're going to, I'm going to have the draft and looked at by the other, other chiefs. And once we're in agreement, then we're going to try to move forward, at least to try to get it before the, the regional school committee.
Do they meet in the summer though?
They don't. They don't meet in July. They meet in June. They meet in May, June, and then in August.
So, so at this point, I don't have an answer. I don't have a solid answer for you. But it's, it's, it's a very fluid process and I hope that because the doors have been opened, that they may have us there sooner.
Yeah. Because I mean, we would, we would be open to a special town meeting if it's.
Oh, yeah.
To, to, to address any kind of warrant article. We have to, because this board has been trying. I know our board has changed a little bit for many years and I know you've been a strong advocate too.
And I think it's important to get the buy-in of all the communities because I think everybody has the same interests in mind. And I just think it's, I think it's a better approach. I think it better educates.
Oh, I, I don't, I'm totally on board with the collaboration. I just wanted to know what the timeline was.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not as short as you wish.
Yeah, well.
That way. Chief, what other towns have a resource officer in the elementary schools? Are there any?
Not on a full-time basis, but they do all have programs in their schools. They do all have officers that go in there regularly. They have officers that have rapport and programs established. So, that each one of those towns do have very good rapport with everyone in their elementary schools.
Well, I know we did too before we had the officers.
And we're the first one with a full-time resource officer in there, but we also have a very large school in comparison. So, but the, the good thing there is that there is some foundation and we just have, we just have to model it and standardize it so that we're all sending the same message to the kids that are all going ultimately to the same junior and senior high.
Anything else, Chief? Priscilla?
Yes. Do you, do you know by any chance, they have a school committee meeting tomorrow? Do you know if they're going to discuss this at all tomorrow? Are they going to be brought up to snuff?
I believe so, there was a process that was explained to us by the chairman, that they were tasked to go and have this meeting with us, and they'll report back...
They will.
Their, the results of that meeting to the committee, and I think the committee will make a decision from there, what's gonna be next.
Okay.
I think that that was just part of their process, they were first, they were first instructed to go out and...
Do you sense a positive from the chairman?
It was a great meeting, really, it was a great meeting, and it was, everything was positive, I don't think there was a negative words spoken, and I don't think that there was a negative feeling in the room, and even from the audience members, it just, you know, it seemed to have that, you know, everybody seemed to be on the same page.
Priscilla, it might be listed on their agenda, but then it might not.
I'm looking now, I'm looking now.
Oh, it may not, yeah. We sit too close to each other, Leon, on the same track a lot. Then again, it might not, it might just come under, you know, old business or new business, not for discussion.
No, it is on the agenda. I noticed in the, I think in the April report, you had training in the town of Holland, you yourself went there, another officer did, and this is, I presume you were training with police, public safety people in Holland, and does that happen with, you know, some of the, or is, will that happen with the other towns in the five towns?
And it's, like, again, we're opening the doors to begin having that happen on a regular basis, where...
Sounds like a good start to the collaboration.
It is, and I think it's a, I think it's a great idea, and hopefully, hopefully it'll build momentum, and we will have the vision that we have become reality, and, you know, hopefully we can set some pretty realistic goals, and see some fruit of our labor in this next school year.
Yeah, I think the selectmen would like to see it done sooner than later.
I will, but, you know, I appreciate the fact that the process is moving forward right now.
Mary, how many years, Mary Darling, how many years has it been?
Yeah, 'cause this is my third term, so this is nine years, and we were on FinCom, so it's been ten or eleven years. I mean, I know you know that, too, so...
You know that, yeah. More than anybody.
Seems like forever.
Yeah, it's been a decade.
Okay, anything else for the chief?
It's been a decade.
Do you have anything else for us?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Enjoy the nice evening.
I will, thank you.
While we're here.
I'm gonna wait to park a lot of the heat on.
Yeah. Okay, next, we have our building department head, Nelson Burlingame.
Good evening, board, I have a few here, and I'll just wanna give out the fees and high columns of the MLC three.
Thank you.
Yeah, didn't we?
Thank you, Nelson.
Thank you.
Bless you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, thank you.
The other thing, just, this is just FYI's, actually, I live in John, this, this was something that came through in the old John, it's about the solar field, if anyone wants to pay one day, it's really, really interesting, they're broke down, taxes, and what they get for taxes. I thought it was very interesting, a good place to look at, anyway.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
We don't allow them, do we? Solar, so, yeah.
Yeah, we have, so we do, oh, yeah, not on the properties, that's what it was.
They, they actually have a town in John.
Not on the resident.
And they got on a warrant that they do wanna block them.
These are non, non-municipal, um, civilians.
Yes, yes. But it was, it's interesting, because, because you still receive taxes from it.
Oh, yeah.
If you read it, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty important.
No, we went, we went through that when Blue Wave came in.
Yep.
Um, as far as my monthly report, you received the one for the month of April, basically, I'm just gonna go through the highlights, building department permits, there was sixty-eight, the grand total was like nine thousand, six, twenty-six, seventy-five.
We don't have a copy of it.
I don't, I don't know that I have a copy of it, either.
Okay, 'cause Cindy sent it over, I know that, so...
Do you have the copies of the, I don't think we got them, Nelson.
You wanna, uh...
Yeah, give me two seconds.
Okay, I could talk about a few other things, I don't have any problem.
Just that one, and then I've got that one.
What I'll do is, I'll read that later, and I'll give you all my numbers and everything, and I'm sorry about that, but like I say, I don't know what happened. The other thing I usually do is I, I go through the highlights of, of, you know, it's kinda current, 'cause what you, 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 as being select people, will be asked the questions. Some of the things, like today, I had a meeting with Hadley Kabinsky, which is the one that she's buying as of June fifteenth, as far as I know, the, the old Hebert Candy Mansion, and as soon as she's closed, she's hoping to get the permit as soon as she can, as far as for that doggy daycare. She's really excited about it, I think we as a town should be excited about it, I know I am, it's, it's, it's a good spot for it, I think it'll be a success, they have one in Charlton that does really well, I think it'll be a, a good business for Sturbridge, that'd be good for a building that hasn't been used for years, it'd be good for us to get our taxes. The lady that owns it just happens to be my neighbor in Charlton, and she's a very thorough person, very hard-working person, if anybody's gonna succeed, I think she will, I really do. The other thing, Panera Bread, I, I just got the application, I haven't gone through it yet, but I'm hoping to issue it soon, even if it's on a phased permit basis, you know, so they can get started, 'cause I know they wanna get started and get it open. Public House, they're looking at probably November, hopefully, to get their CFC. At the moment, they're going along really, really well, and they've got a lot of their mechanicals in, they've got it studded, they've got it insulated, they've actually sheet-wrapped quite a bit of it. Their sprinkler system, everything is just about in, I mean, there's no water flowing or anything, but, but, but they're getting close. I got a call the other day from the contractor for the marijuana dispensary, he asked for an extension, I'm not quite sure what's going on there, but I, I, I know that they're talking about changing the use of the, not the use of the building, but they, something about one floor instead of two, and I know there was some site plan changes and stuff, and I think between the builder and the owner themselves, they're trying to work out a direction to go. So, I think that's why we haven't really seen a lot there, and they really haven't got going, because they originally had a permit for the original building, and now they're kinda like, like on hold at the moment. The other thing is, I have been getting some communications between that Seven Main with the new bank that took it, they've, they've written a couple of times, and in Edwards Gas, that building in the back, there's some communications going on there, and I don't know for sure, but I know Edwards is trying to buy it from the, from the owner that owns it now, and I don't know what's gonna happen, so, I think just the fact that if, if, you know, we talk about that amount of money we get possibly, that's on a warrant, I think that's actually helped to open communications, because people, you know, they, they watch these meetings, they read the paper, they, everything, so I, I think everything's positive. The other thing that was interesting is what the chief said about the school, and, you know, communicating with it and everything else. I just wanna mention, last week, I, I had a meeting or discussion, a little class that I held with the juniors, and we went through building inspectors' requirements and the books, and what books to buy, and everything else, and I think they enjoyed it, and I know I enjoyed it, and, you know, if, if, if I can convince, you know, or I talk one kid into, you know, opening a business, or whatever they may do, and they, they know what they need to do to come in for the building permits and everything, I, I, I think it's a good thing, and, you know, they all seem to pay attention, and they were listening quite intensively, so that was pretty good, and we're gonna have more of them to, different subjects. I mean, there's plenty of things to talk about, the building code's changing constantly, they need to know, they need to know what books to buy, so that, you know, they, they can succeed and get their licenses and stuff, so, that was good. Any questions or anything about, you know, oh, okay, your monthly report, you have it in front of you?
Yeah, it's to, a different format.
Yes, yes, I just, I left that one because basically, you know, it lists the total permits of sixty-eight, the grand total's ninety-six, twenty-six, seventy-five, it's broken down to electrical permits, the total is twenty-five, of the, of the number of permits, with the total money at twenty-two, twenty-five, gas permits, six at five-thirty-three, and six at five-fifty. A lot of the stuff that I told you today was, 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 you know, was current stuff, and there wasn't tons of, you know, big things that, that were important, or that, you know, I felt to relay that, you know, you would be to ask the questions on, other than what I had just talked about, so, maybe that's why you see a little different format tonight. But, any questions, I'm ready to answer them.
Does the board have any questions on this, or anything else?
I just had a question on Edwards, prompted me when you were talking about the building in the back. Are they no longer gonna be a gas station, they're just straight a garage, they took out their old gas tanks?
They are gonna continue to be a gas station, what happened is, I think that they, they, it, when they dug that tank out, it was more, if you're looking at the building, it was to the right of the building, and I think they thought that they could just put the island over there, and they found out they had to go back to planning and, and, you know, get permission, and different things they had to do.
Okay.
And then when they realized they did, they actually covered it back over, because they're gonna actually move the canopy a bit to the right, and they're reconfiguring it a little bit, but they're going through planning with it now.
Oh, okay.
So, they are gonna continue with gas.
But they're just gonna change the way you drive in?
Yes, they have a sticker station, they own a sticker station that's down at the old Spinnies building there, and they're gonna move that sticker station back up to there, too, eventually. And they're gonna, they're gonna do the building over, not extensively, but they're gonna make it look better, you know what I mean, they're gonna make the whole property look better, and they're grading it and stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, and then we have...
The fees.
Your permit request for increasing fees.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just, just for Chase's benefit, so, several months ago, the building inspector came in with the, then, I guess the plumbing inspector at the same time, to talk about a modification of the fees. Board of Selectmen received a presentation from, from Nelson and the plumbing inspector, this is the next time that he's come forward, so this is a, kind of a carryover from before you started.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, Madam Chair, I, just quickly, I'll go highlight Chase, because he wasn't here. What happened is, they hadn't been changed, Chase, since two thousand and eleven, okay? There were some things that needed changing, we didn't increase the fees a lot, but some of the things, too, it wasn't like it should've been. And if you look at this, especially the building one, we went from the six to the seven on the base fees, the same as far as the residential. Some of the big things was, if you look at roofing, siding, windows, what was happening, Chase, is, like, say you had a huge job, it was a flat fee of fifty dollars, no matter what, so you paid fifty dollars if you put in one window, if you did thirty thousand dollars worth of work, you stayed paid fifty dollars. By having that, if over ten thousand, it's fairer to everybody as to what they're paying for fees. I mean, I know it's an increase, and you're a businessman, but there is reasons for it, and it makes logic.
Yeah.
And I kinda wanna express that, especially to everybody, to you, too, being a new member. The other thing, some of them, like, like, the big thing was the fees, too, for, if you go to, to like page two or page three, they were getting forty, I wanna say forty dollars a inspection, the plumbing and electrical, we're gonna go from forty to fifty, everything's going up, they use their own vehicles, you know, they do get a stipend and everything, but it, but it was almost getting to the point that it, it was almost not worth it to them, and you know they're both part-time, and they both do a good job, so that was the other biggie in there. So, by changing theirs from, from forty to fifty, we changed some of ours, so that it didn't end up costing the town. We took a little bit in, because Cindy does, you know, all the paperwork and things, so, so there is overhead for the, for us, the building department. So, we tried to average it all out, so it was pretty fair. We did run in a lot, a little problem while we're here, back the second time, and Mike was right, Mike Supernat, we had a mistake on the overhead service, the modular was either the same, or it was a little bit more than a regular house, and it shouldn't have been, but we have changed it, Mike, so it reflects, you know, the way it should, so it's, it's actually, you know, if you go to the electrical section, that two-twenty-five was two hundred, we, we had it higher than that, we had it higher than a regular house, so we, so we, we brought it back down to where it should be, it was just a mistake when it was rented. And, that was about the only things we adjusted, that, that, mostly that. As far as I know, everything else should be okay, and I'm just looking for a vote that you guys accept, if you accept it, we're gonna put, that's why I put on both of them effective date in a year, because what happens, too, is some of these that are supposed to be voted on by you guys, it, it's really important we have a date on it, so, so, you know, if anybody questions the fees, we'll always have a date, 'cause there was some stuff that got, it didn't actually get updated, but it, it got written differently, so it was easier to read in two thousand and fifteen, but I think it should've probably, not really got voted on, 'cause nothing changed, but I, but we should've had a date with it, you know, so this'll solve that problem, too. So, if there's any questions about any of these fees left.
Board, do you have any question on the fees, Mary?
I just have, just so I understand the, well, let me ask this, when's the last time that we increased the fees?
Two thousand and eleven, I believe.
Eleven, okay.
Yeah.
It was a long time ago.
Yes.
So, Nelson, you know, when you said the fees paid to the inspectors, they're using their own cars, and it wasn't worthwhile, so they went up to fifty, well, you're proposing fifty dollars rather than forty, so ten dollar increase, and then the total added inspection will be one-fifty from a hundred, so we're gonna get forty more dollars, and ten's gonna go, or am I reading that wrong?
Uh, depending on what it is, like, that's, 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 which page you now are on?
I'm looking to the right, under residential, I'm looking to the, that third column, can you just explain that column?
Now, your top heading, you're on the building?
She's on the residential, right?
No, you're, I'm sorry, you're looking at plumbing.
Oh, I'm looking at the plumbing right now.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, I didn't see that at the top, I was getting confused. Y'all get to that page as well?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I could just ask the, ask it, then.
Yeah, 'cause it's...
It's a hundred and fifty dollars, so ten dollars is gonna go to the plumbing inspector, and the other forty comes to the town?
Yes, yes.
The whole inspection will cost one-fifty instead of...
And, and there's two inspections, so it was a hundred, and it's gonna be, now it's gonna be one-fifty.
Mm-hmm.
So, if those two inspections...
That's kind of a big, that's a little bit, that's a bigger increase.
Well, that's what's going to the town, the fifty buck, well, it won't be fifty.
Forty dollars, forty will go, 'cause ten's going to the inspector.
Yeah, well, it'll be one-fifty.
So, you're crisscrossed by fifty percent.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the, the unit, is that, is that for condos? Two hundred per unit, and it was a hundred per unit?
Per unit, per condo, yes.
So, we're doubling that?
Yes.
All right, that's what's my question, thank you.
Anyone else?
I, I got a question on a effective date, would May twenty-second be what you're looking at for effective date, or?
July first.
Yeah, I think we were talking July first.
Okay.
And, and like Leon said, we had discussed that, too, it's, there's nothing easier, if we ever do it again, we would wanna hit the same date, preferably.
Well, not only that, but it gives us time to implement, educate, inform, we'll notify people if, if the board is so ready.
Yeah, getting, changed in fees like this, cause usually has some, some, a little bit of disruption, so...
Yeah, and I guess...
If we give it to a July fir, I was kinda being facetious when I said May twenty-second.
Oh, like a new hire.
So, Mary, Mary Darling, when I say Mary, it's too, whatever's in yellow, that's why I gave you those sheets, whatever's in yellow will be what has changed, the right side would be what's, like, like, looking at the plumbing, the right side is what is the towns, and the left is what has changed as far as what we'll be paying the inspectors.
So, I guess I just, just, so it's explained to me, like, if I owned a two-family house, I'd kinda wanna know why those fees doubled, and the single families went up fifty percent? You know, they were both at a hundred per unit for a two-family, and it was a hundred for a single family, but then the single family went to one-fifty, and the two-family went to two hundred per unit. Shouldn't we, since they were the same before?
It's two hundred, one hundred per unit, I see what you're saying.
Right, so...
So, it's one hundred, and the single is one-fifty, maybe I said it wrong, just now.
No, that's right, but, no, oh, see, the way I read it, I'm sorry, I read it like, I went across the line from single family, and I read it as it was a hundred dollars, and now it's going to one-fifty.
Right.
And then when I looked at the two-family, it was a hundred per unit, and now it's going to two hundred per unit.
Yeah.
So, that's what I mean, they were both only a hundred, and the single family went up to one-fifty, but the two-family went up to two hundred, and I just wondered why it's a different increase when it was the same.
Hey, let's make that changes right now, 'cause when you vote out, we'll put one-fifty.
Okay.
No problem. No problem. Anything else you see, just say something, we'll change them all right now. Maybe we can vote on it.
No, I just-
One?
It seemed like, it seemed like a very hefty increase.
A two-family's going up to?
One fifty.
So it's one fifty, and the other one's one fifty, so they're going from a hundred to, she's got a point.
'Cause it's per unit, it's per unit.
Oh, they're cha, you're charging per unit?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I could understand-
I, I think in the communications between-
I could understand why it would be two hundred, 'cause on the two, two-family, when you're inspecting it, if you're doing both, the plumbing and both, both sides of the two-family at the same time, it would be less, less work for the inspector, but if it's a hundred and fifty per unit, if that's what we want, that's fine.
Well, two hundred per unit would be four hundred dollars, maybe more.
No, you're, Mary, you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're right.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, so does someone want to make a motion, one way or the other, to either approve the increases as amended?
I, I'll make the motion to approve the increases as amended.
To be effective.
Effective July first, night, twenty eighteen.
Is your second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
So Nelson, what we would have you do is do a fresh one with all the new rates.
Yes, yes.
And we'll, we can develop, like, an announcement that goes on the town's website.
And I think what happened, in the communications, a few things were written a little wrong. That was one of them, the other one was the one Mike picked up, and they're both really good catchers, and I appreciate it, you know, 'cause we try to keep real logic, and we try to not to increase it too much, and I think we did pretty good for the most part.
Okay, Nelson, are we going to stick with this format or the one we used to get?
Which would you rather? We stick with Mary?
I like the other one, it's more detail, and we really can tell what's going on where.
Okay, I love what you're saying, 'cause people are gonna listen to this, to this meeting, and we've had some discussions about what you just said, and some people thought the other, this was better, and my idea wasn't as good, and, so I gave into it, but now I'm gonna go back to mine, and kinda, you made, you made my day!
Thank you.
I hope somebody still listens to this.
Makes up for the days I don't.
She's laughing, you know exactly what I mean, don't you?
I do, I sure do.
So Nelson, you can still make your town meeting, couldn't you?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Or the Celtics at eight-thirty.
Actually, yeah, that, that was-
That's more important.
She's really politically motivated, and she asked if I was gonna be there, she isn't, I don't know if I'd be there, I don't know.
See you later.
Take care.
We could keep you longer if you wanted, if you don't wanna go.
Take care, okay. Did you give us this article, or didn't, Nelson?
It was, no, it was in your mail slot. I'm sorry, when I grabbed the material-
Well, that's okay, I never checked my mail slot.
I know, that's why I gave you your mail slot.
But I did, I did read it in my paper. Okay, next we have the town administrator's update.
Madam Chair, in the, in the mail slots for the Board of Selectmen over the last couple of weeks, you will both, you have received both of these. These are the independent account, independent auditor's review of the public schools, and the town of Sturbridge basic financial statements. Both audits were very complimentary and positive to the town. I just wanna make sure that the Board of Selectmen has received those, and if there are any questions, just let me know, and the finance director, the town accountant, or myself, or the school business agent can get back to you with some answers. But I just wanna make sure everyone knew that.
I haven't read it yet, but I will.
There's no management letter.
I do have a question. How many years have we had the same company?
Well, I can't answer that question, I can say that they've been our auditors for some time.
Yeah, I mean, isn't it a good idea sometimes to change?
Yeah, I can say, I can speak to the finance director, see how, how long we've had these people, and I'm not opposed to going out to bid for that service.
Yeah, well, I mean, sometimes you find things with the new company that you didn't find with someone you had for twenty to fifty years or whatever. I'm sure it's not that long.
No, I don't think it's that long, but we've probably had them for some time.
Yeah, I mean, quite a while. Okay, anybody else have a question on that?
I would ask the Board of Selectmen to accept a donation of three hundred dollars from the Lions Club on behalf of the Sturbridge Fire Department.
Is your motion?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
In your agenda package, you have correspondence from Charter Communications. I'd like to announce on an annual basis that the town is in receipt of a hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-five cents for the annual PEG access payment. It's based upon the two thousand and seventeen revenues, based upon our license agreement with Charter Communications. And the document and the copy of the check is in your agenda package for your information. In your agenda package, Madam Chair, you have correspondence from Jean Pillow from the Thames River Basin Partnership. It's a three-page letter to the Board of Select, well, it's actually to me, but they're asking for a member of the Board of Selectmen who might have an interest in serving on their partners' group, basically to work on their plan of work for the next three years. If there's any members of the Board of Selectmen who are, are interested in this subject and would like to be the designated from the town of Sturbridge, this would be your opportunity to volunteer.
They're volunteering, I mean, we don't really have to.
There's no gun to your head, no. But if anyone is absolutely interested, they're extending a, you know, opportunity for the board to participate.
Okay.
Moving on. In your agenda package, you have a copy of the final report from the, from the, from the state of Massachusetts. This is from the Executive Office of Municipal and School Technology. This is part of our community compact. They just wanted you folks to see the final report that they prepared on the town's behalf relative to our new website that we implemented this past year. You'll note, Selectmen Jimis, that they do reference Code Red in this report as well.
Yes, I did see that, yes.
Since we were just talking about it before this meeting. I just wanna make sure that the Board of Selectmen had a copy of that. I do want you to know that I intend to place this report on the town's website under, under the town administrator's blog, so that the entire town can see it. In your agenda package, you have a memo from me regarding one of the town goals from this, this current year, which is regarding a strategy with, with regards to recreational marijuana. As the Board of Selectmen knows, you set a goal to work to establish a strategy for recreational marijuana. Over the last year and a half, we've been educating ourselves on the ever-changing environment with regards to recreational marijuana. We've been attending seminars and lectures on the subject. We've had repeated conversations with our council and our legislators regarding the subject. And as you know, the Board of Selectmen, at your request, the town planner and I and town council have prepared and brought forward, again, a draft article for the annual town meeting to ban retail sales of recreational marijuana and associated products. We recommend that the Selectmen prepare a strategy to sell this to the community, and we are ready to assist you as you see fit. As I explained to you folks at your last meeting, the finance committee has deemed the ban of recreational marijuana to be unworthy of moving forward at the annual town meeting. What we should, what I believe that you should be working on is a, taking a stance at town meeting to make a substitute motion for the voter's consideration. On the memo that I have given to you in your agenda package, I've given you a draft motion for their, for your consideration to be prepared to move this at town meeting. We crafted this motion with council's review. It's attached for your consideration here this evening. This, I'm saying all of this because this is your last meeting before town meeting. Please know that the moratorium that we passed last year on recreational marijuana is set to expire at the end of this calendar year. If the ban on recreational marijuana was once again to fail at town meeting, the town planner and I are prepared to begin working on a draft bylaw to effectively regulate this industry here in Sturbridge. We believe within a few months, we'd have a good working draft to present to the Board of Selectmen for your consideration. We would be looking for the feedback of the Board of Selectmen and the planning board on the best way to structure such a bylaw. Once our draft is prepared, we think it would be helpful to have a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the planning board to review the contents of the bylaw, so that all, both boards can be on the same page as we walk into a special town meeting sometime this fall. We believe that a special town meeting, when I say we, the town planner and I believe, that a special time meeting could be held in October or November prior to the holidays, and still have plenty of time to craft a bylaw that meets your needs as well as the planning board's needs. Excuse me. If we are going down the road of creating a bylaw, I think that what we should be trying to accomplish with this bylaw would be to give the town the greatest ability to control the substance in our community, while at the same time maximizing the revenues in the town would see for the sale of the substance. There are plenty, and I do mean plenty, of examples to look at from across the state, and the town planner and I are prepared to receive guidance from this board and from the planning board in anticipation of crafting this bylaw. This is all if we're not successful on town meeting floor on June fourth. As always, we stand ready to serve the boards in this important venture. Let us know if we have, if you have any questions for us or comments that we feel can help us in this mission, and we stand ready to serve you in this matter.
Okay, any comment or question from the board? Mary?
I'm prepared to make a motion to present-
That was my next question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's okay.
I'll wait until you ask that.
It saves time.
I'm just trying to move to you. I'm gonna make a motion that we present and support the substitute motion as drafted by our town administrator and town council in our meeting tonight.
Second. Any discussion? Oh, Mike?
Yeah, I, can we separate the place and support in the motion? 'Cause I'd, I'd be willing to place it, but I don't, I don't support the article as written.
Well, it's up to Mary, she made the motion.
Well, that, that's just gonna lead to a second one, where I'm gonna ask everyone to support. I mean, I can change it, but then I'll have two motions.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll just vote against it, but with a, I'm just stating that I, I like the idea of placing it, but I, I don't support the article. I'll, I'll, let's just vote.
Well, just because it's discussion, I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I'm more than willing to divide it up, but I will make a second motion to support it.
Then, then just make a motion, and if it goes four to one, it goes four to one.
Okay, I'm gonna place and, present and support.
We don't usually break up, place and then?
Yeah.
Okay, and we have a second. Any more discussion? All in favor of placing and supporting? Four, all opposed, one?
I will have this prepared on a formal page and ha, ready for the Board of Selectmen signature when we get to the June fourth meeting of the Board of Selectmen.
The, the subject of marijuana was at the Massachusetts Selectments Association that was held, meeting that was held last week, and I got quite a bit of information at that meeting, and there, there are still some more changes to the regulations they're working on, notably that if a town cannot, is working diligently on trying to resolve and decide what it wants to do with, with respect to recreational marijuana, they, the Attorney General's office is working on a change to the regulations to allow an extension of the moratoriums. But if, if we're not working on it, we're not gonna get an extension of a moratorium. And, and the date that they're saying is, our next annual town meeting would be the latest that we would have to, to make a final decision. There's, there's some other, a lot of other information that was, was given, particularly, I learned a lot about the, the smaller facilities that are, the, the problem with recreational marijuana is, is large companies that come in and, and do it. Massachusetts is kinda unique in, in that they have what I call mom and pop grow and, and retail facilities that are under five thousand square feet total area, all enclosed in one building. And that, that particular type of business interests me a lot more than, than the large grow, growers and stuff that might come in from out of state and, and just saturate the market. Just, just saying. I, I just wanted to give you what, what was discussed at the Massachusetts Selectments Association meeting.
Through you, Madam Chair. Just a question to Mr. Supernaut. So it is curious that the, that the state might now be looking at extending moratoriums, and I wonder if that is a require, that a town meeting would be required to extend the moratorium. And the reason I ask is, that's how moratorium was established in the first place, was that town meeting. So if it requires town meeting vote to extend the moratorium till the next annual town meeting, perhaps at the special town meeting, if this was not to pass, the ban was not to pass by a two-thirds vote, we might need two articles at a special, one to create a bylaw if that were not to pass, perhaps a secondary article to extend the moratorium into the next annual town meeting. Quite frankly, in my opinion, I'm not sure the wisdom of that change from the state, to be honest with you. I don't know if it makes any sense, but it is what it is, and unless the Board of Selectmen or the planning board has the ability by vote to extend a moratorium, or request an extension of the moratorium without a town meeting vote, I'm not exactly sure how that would work.
I don't, I don't know if they're exactly sure how they're doing it either.
It is very curious.
Yeah, which is difficult. I mean, it, it's a what-if.
It is very curious.
This is, this whole marijuana thing's like walking on quicksand. It really is.
Doesn't surprise me, though, that they're thinking about extending the moratorium, 'cause this is very much dividing the Commonwealth in half, and it's, I'm not surprised that they're kicking the can down the road, and-
Unless maybe they're-
I'm gonna kick it further.
Didn't surprise me.
For a while.
Unless they're thinking about automatically extending all moratoriums until the next town meeting, unless there's a bylaw passed. I, I, there is a lot of, you raised more questions with your statement than I prepared to even ask.
That, when, when Margaret, what's her last name, Hurley?
She's from the Attorney General's office.
When she said that, there was a lot of questions raised by Selectmen. There was a whole slew of what, Selectmen questions after-
'Cause that's brand new.
That she said that.
Plus, I mean, there are so many different town meeting dates.
Yeah, some are in March and some are in June.
Yep.
Very interesting.
Okay, so we have that, and you'll get it formalized.
Yes, thank you, I'll take care of that. And by the way, I don't wanna move off of this subject too quickly, 'cause this is probably the most important item on the agenda for tonight. I, I am willing to sit with a Selectman or two, not a majority, but if there are some that want to talk to me about what kind of a strategy we want to employ at town meeting, if you need any assistance from me on this matter, just let me know, I'm willing to sit with one or two of you to chat about this prior to June fourth, so. Next on the agenda, Madam Chair, I'm bringing for your information a new road race that's sponsored by Raps gallions to be held on August twenty-fifth. In your agenda package is the, well, I think I had given you an update to this either over the weekend or today. You have the memo from Lieutenant Saloyo to Chief Ford that has been approved. It basically outlines the traffic plan for the project. I know you folks don't typically vote on traffic plans for projects such as this, but I am bringing it to your attention because it is a brand-new ra, road race that we have not had in the town before. This is going to be held beginning at eight, eight o'clock in the morning, with the race stepping off at ten o'clock in the morning. All runners will be out on the road no later than eleven o'clock in the morning. All the race activities are expected to be completed by noon time. All of this to be held on August twenty-fourth. The route, the route will begin on the edge of the north parking field at Raps gallions, where it meets at the intersection of Lake and Arnold Roads. It will proceed up Arnold Road, over the Brookfield line, then turn around at Joe Goddard Road in Brookfield, returning to the starting point. They will remain in the southbound lane of Arnold Road as they proceed north, and remain in the northbound lane upon returning from Joe Goddard Road in Brookfield. I'm bringing it to your attention because, like I said, it is a new event, and I just want you to know that the Selectmen, I'm sorry, that the police department has reviewed and approved this traffic plan, forwarded it to me for my approval today. So, for your information, Madam Chair.
I got a question about the, what, what you just said in the map. The map has the direction of the route back and forth just opposite of what you described. You said it, they're going north in the southbound lane, and south in the northbound lane. The map shows that, just the opposite. So, just, so there's no confusion.
One moment, please.
The ma, the map shows it going counterclockwise, the loop.
Yep. I, I'll, I'll verify this with the chief.
It's gotta be one way or the other.
It's gonna be one way or the other, right.
Doesn't really matter, but-
But if there's people running in both lanes, it would be- That would be a problem, yeah. They'll be tripping over each other.
But we do have the application for the permit for the race.
Correct, yeah. Everything is good.
Does anyone have a question on that? Does somebody wanna make a motion? So moved?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? It is the twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth of August, yep.
I thought I heard you say the twenty-fourth.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Maybe I did.
Okay, all in favor?
Madam Chair, I would ask for the appointment, for the concurrence on the appointment of Margaret Darling, Edmund Neal, Susan Grandone, and Danielle LaRivier to, four out of the five vacancies on the Sturbridge Affordable Housing Partnership. I know that you folks have asked me to, to try to get this committee up and running. Thankfully, we were able to get some newspaper articles in the newspaper. We've mentioned it at a variety of selectmen's meetings over the past, I don't know, six or seven months or so, maybe longer, and I'm happy to have said, happy to have seen that four people have stepped forward to be, to be named to this committee. I would ask that these people be appointed for a three-year term, to be expiring, we will say at the end of June of 2021.
Okay, I just have a question, because you're interchanging Sturbridge Housing Partnership in Affordable Housing Partnership.
Yeah, so, the law actually recognizes them as housing partnerships, yep.
Yeah, okay.
I use the word affordable to remind people what the focus of that is.
But they, I know they're going to focus on the affordable.
Correct.
Okay, is there any question on the report? Is there a motion then to appoint these people?
I'll make a motion to confirm the appointments of Margaret Darling, Edmund Neal, and Susan Grandone.
And Danielle LaRivier.
And Danielle LaRivier.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
I, I anticipate having a, I anticipate having an induc, an initial meeting of these folks sometime in the next two weeks. So, they were all very excited and passionate about the, about the opportunity to serve on this committee. I don't anticipate we will have any problems getting a meeting quickly with these folks. They look very excited about it, so.
Now, I don't know where it is, but there was a needs assessment done, I don't know how many years ago, but...
Probably the last time we updated the master plan, or maybe before that, but it will be up to do with that again.
Yeah, but I mean, it's something to look at, because it addressed all categories, affordable.
Mm-hmm. A housing plan, development of a housing plan.
Yeah, housing needs.
Yep.
We probably want to do another full housing needs analysis in 2021, because the one we have now is based on 2000 data.
I would think so, yeah.
It's not, they didn't use 2010 data.
They probably didn't have the data certified by the time they did the report.
Yeah.
Okay.
All, I would ask for the concurrence of the hire of Ashley Piazek as the new administrative assistant for the Conservation Department effective May 22nd, 2018, at a rate of pay of 1663 per hour.
Any questions from the board?
I move to confirm Ashley Piazek as the new administrative assistant to the Conservation Commission, effective May 22nd, at the rate of 1663 per hour.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
And speaking of somebody who's excited, this person is excited to start working for the town.
Oh, that's good.
Great, that's great.
She's a young girl, right?
She is.
They were always enthused, right, Chase?
That's right.
Are you saying that I'm not enthused?
Um, no. Goes from enthusiasm to humility.
Oh gee, that's, that's much worse.
I thought you were going to say indifference, but that's even worse.
That's worse. And the last item that I have under Town Administrator's update is my report on another of the selectmen's goals, which is the consideration of changes to the office hours to provide more, more nighttime hours for the citizens. As I, as I have detailed in my report to you folks, one of the goals that the selectmen established this year was to present a recommendation to the selectmen for a work hour schedule change for most of the municipal departments to be open in the evenings at least one day of the week, for having residents and taxpayers being able to receive municipal services during non, non-traditional work hours. Certainly, opening late one night of the week is not an uncommon practice. It's certainly common for towns in the greater Sturbridge area. In your agenda package, I've given to you kind of a breakdown of some of the towns that responded to my survey when I did this a week and a half ago. I outreach to many of the communities, and I've given you a copy of the survey to kind of give you an understanding as to how these communities in our area utilize their office hours during the week. Of the 16 communities that I've, that have responded to me, 10 of them have some evening hours to meet with the residents, and nearly half of the communities are completely closed on Fridays, and five others have reduced hours on Fridays. Some very small communities, such as Holland and Princeton, and I'll use Spencer as well, are closed in Fridays without longer hours during the week. Most of those town halls are open only part-time hours, including the town of Spencer. Currently, most Sturbridge departments are open Monday through Friday from eight in the morning to four o'clock with a, four o'clock in the afternoon, with a one-hour lunch break. Obviously, there are some exceptions to this, but this is the norm for most of our town employees. So that most of our town employees have a 35-hour work week, those are the people who work full-time. I understand that this was an item for the discussion sometime in the past when Mr. Sahouski was the town administrator. That effort failed because there was a lack of consensus between the employees and the Board of Selectmen as to how this could be accomplished. So, in order to prevent that from happening again, we did work with the current employees. We held employee meetings to discuss this project and to try to find areas of common ground in order to bring this recommendation to the Board of Selectmen tonight. The recommendation that we're proposing is a model that seems to meet the goal of offering later hours for town hall and center office building employees for residents, so that they would, they would be most acceptable to the current employees of these buildings. And the proposal that we're recommending was Monday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from eight to 4:30 in the afternoon, Tuesdays from eight to 7:30, and a closed on Fridays, we would reduce the lunch hours from one hour to a half an hour. Under this, under this scenario, these offices would be open five hours later in the day than they're, we are currently open, thereby providing opportunities for our residents to meet with these departments later than they had been previously. During our staff meetings, it was discussed that boards and committees were trying to meet on Tuesday evenings to accommodate this change in hours. As a result, I would propose having the selectmen move their meeting, meeting dates from Mondays to Tuesdays, which, as you folks know, would benefit the selectmen, since we already need to move a number of our meetings anyways due to the large number of Monday holidays. We would also suggest that the selectmen, you know, try these new hours effective July 1st, and I did suggest that if you were so willing, you could do so on a, on a trial basis, you know, to see how it would work. Then we could more than likely survey the community and see if these new hours meet the needs of the residents and meet the needs of the Board of Selectmen. I know that I've had some comments from some of the selectmen, and one of the questions was about the town clerk. I probably should have suggested that the, I should have said to you folks that the town clerk is part of the recommendation of this change. She is also looking to change her hours to Monday nights as well. I probably should have said...
Tuesday nights.
I'm sorry, to Tuesday nights as well. I probably should have shared that. And as you note from the memo that I prepared for you folks, one of the reasons why this was brought forward to you folks again was the fact that the town clerk's office has been doing night meetings since she's taken over, or soon after she started as the new town clerk. It's been very well-received by the residents of the town. You may recall, even at our last meeting of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk was here to accept that change in the voting machines document, and she had not one, not two, but three marriage intentions, because it's hard for people to come out at night, during the daytime, take time off from work in order to do their business at the town offices. Again, this is a recommendation that we are making to the Board of Selectmen. As you all know, the ultimate decision on what we do, or if we do anything at all, rests with the Board of Selectmen. I'm here to be able to answer any questions and guidance on this, and I look forward to your comments.
Any questions? Priscilla?
Well, I for one think that the residents should be asked before, not after the fact.
Okay.
And the reason I say that is, the residents have, the taxpayers have paid for the renovations of these two buildings, that I feel that they should have the say on what do they need from, from the community, from the town hall or the center office building. Whether we do it at a town meeting, a special town meeting as a warrant item, or you do it as a ballot question, I'm not sure which, non-binding referendum question, I'm not sure. Maybe town meeting, special town meeting in the fall might be the way to ask the question. My concern to this is also that, supposing you close on Friday, and hypothetically, let's just say a business has an issue, and, and the Board of Health on Thursday at 3:30 has to close a business, just hypothetically. Now, that business is out of business until Monday, whereas sometimes the problems can be, the, the business can renovate, can rectify its problem very quickly. But there's nobody there on Friday to go and say, okay, you're all set, you've done what we've asked you to do, now you can open again. So that business is shut Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and prob, and part of Monday until, because now you got backup. And I, I just don't think it serves the community in every way. The other thing is, if all meetings are on Tuesdays, we have a lot of committees. So if a person wants to go to conservation and wants to go to the zoning board, how are they going to do this? They can't. And the other thing is, I for one, I work on Tuesdays. I have made my schedules around the Monday mandate, and I can't change these things. It's not within my hands to change my assignment.
Mary?
Are you going down the line?
Well, I'm just taking whoever's...
All right, I'll, I'll go now. I, I all, I provided Leon, Leon's going to be bored with me, because I already provided him kind of a long thing as well. So, I am not on board with closing entirely on Fridays. I agree with Priscilla. She's thinking of the, you know, public, I didn't even think of Board of Health, yes, restaurants, but also like people in the building industry. They might need to see Nelson, you know, like, there's an issue, and they work on Saturdays and Sundays. So now you have an entire day, you have Friday, you have, you know, you're out of work that weekend, and there's a lot of businesses that their livelihood depends on the weekend. So when we came forward with wanting to stay open one night a week late, I'm totally on board, and I think there is a lot of support for it. But, you know, with all due respect, like, if we're open until seven, an extra three hours, we're closed Friday afternoons for those three hours. That was, that's the way we talked with Sean. It was like a very easy trade-off. So, if they have lunch from 12 to one, then I guess we close at 12, because they would have had lunch anyway, 12 to four. So, they're actually, and to me, maybe I'm missing something, but that is a very sweet deal. If I were a department head or, or a staff, I would be all over having Friday afternoons off in exchange for staying late on a Monday night or a Tuesday night. And like I said to Leon, that idea of staying till 4:30 and 12, you know, half an hour more at lunch, to me, those three and a half hours, that doesn't offset being closed all day Friday. To me, that just looked like trying to make up, make up the hours so that they can close. I don't see how that's really serving the pub, hold on, I don't see how that serves the public. What we were trying to do is accommodate commuters. So, whether the town hall closes at four or 4:30, that's not benefiting them anyway. And whether the lunch hour is an hour or a half an hour, that's not benefiting them either. This was supposed to just be a clear cut, you stay late one night, and you make up for it by closing Friday afternoon. So I, I, I also don't support going to a four-day week. And the other thing that bothered me, and I, you know, you know, Priscilla, like, we've been meeting, I personally, as I said, I don't really care if it was Monday or Tuesday, but if we have a select person that's planned all of her schedule around Mondays, and Mondays has been how the Board of Selectmen have met for like decades, and the town clerk's willing to meet on Mondays, I don't, I'm going to defer, I'm going to give her the courtesy and support her and say we should continue with the Mondays rather than changing us as well. But what really bothered me, is maybe it's just the wording of it, but it says, you know, and I know you're trying to accom, you're trying to make a lot of people happy, and one of the reasons this fell apart last time is, there was a lot, there were a lot of staff, so it's not you, Leon, but I'm expressing a little bit of frustration. There were a lot of staff that were very, they didn't want to stay late one night, because they already stay late. But we're trying to accommodate, just like the town clerk, we're trying to accommodate people who can't get out of work in time to make it at four o'clock. So I, I think it's a sweet deal, close Friday afternoons and stay late one night. But what I didn't like is, during staff meetings, it was discussed that boards and committees would try to meet on Tuesday evenings to accommodate this change in hours. That totally defeats the purpose. Whatever night they stay late, they should try to clear it from any of their department meetings. So like, if someone had to talk to conservation, that's not the right night for that, for our agent to be meeting with the Conservation Board. It's supposed to be for residents to come in and talk to them, because if they're meeting with their, if they're meeting with their boards on that night, then, then, then they're just extending their day for that, they're not available to the residents.
Well, if I can just address that one issue?
Yeah, just address that one. I must, I must have misunderstood it, because I was like...
No, no, I think, I think you're, you're right. I think that if we were to close town hall at seven or 7:30, and a meeting starts at seven o'clock, there might be a few minutes of overlap, but they're not...
Oh, they're going to have their meetings after they're available to the public.
Usually, that's when we, most of our meetings start around seven o'clock anyways.
That was an issue the last time, though. Mary's right.
I, I didn't realize, just from reading that, I was like, thinking, okay, they're open late and they're having their meeting. So they would start their meeting at seven.
Like they usually do.
Most of the boards and committees are starting their meetings at seven.
Okay, and so they would be open till seven to the public, okay.
What Selectmen Darling said, it was the problem the last time, that those people who have meetings that they have to attend had an issue with staying till seven and then going to a meeting. That was the issue.
If they're willing to do it now, that's great. I wasn't reading it that way.
I'm not sure if they are or they're not.
No, I think so, that's what...
The issue on that was, they had a late night, but the meetings they had were other nights.
Correct, they had more than one.
Yeah.
Right.
And on this, I do know Tuesdays, for example, the town planner, the planning board meets on Tuesdays, so that would work out fine. I believe ZBA works, meets on Tuesdays.
Alternate Tuesdays.
Yeah, when they have, they haven't been for a while.
Conservation meets on Thursdays.
And Conservation meets on Thursdays. But, I mean, I think, you know, I don't think we need to survey the people, because we do get enough feedback that, you know, even when I was still at the school, people would say, well, you know, I have recess duty, I can't get there, I'm here, and this and that. Not just for commuters, but for people in town to be able to come into town hall at reasonable hours. I understand Priscilla's point on, she does have a schedule on Tuesday, but we've had how many Tuesdays this year?
We only have four a year, at the most.
Six, six or seven.
You don't even have that many. You have Martin Luther King Day.
January, February, President's Day.
Okay, then you have Memorial Day. Well, actually, we don't meet Memorial Day.
April, we have Patriots' Day. May, we have Memorial Day.
Yeah, but we don't meet the week usually of Memorial Day, because it's too close to the town meeting.
Oh, yeah.
So then you have, and the Fourth of July changes every year.
Year.
Then you, so you have, you have in October.
Labor Day in October.
You got five a year.
So that's six.
Well, maybe, you know, we don't have, I mean, if the town clerk is willing to go to Tuesdays, and they are willing to stay, and now I feel much better, they're going to have their board meetings after they're open to the public. I, I wasn't catching that, because I was like, great, that defeats the purpose.
I got it that way, the way you did.
Okay, so if they're willing to do that, we can still meet on Mondays. I mean...
Doesn't change anything.
We don't need to be here as well. I mean, people can come on Monday nights to see us, Citizens Forum, not that we get a lot of them. And on Tuesdays, the rest of the, you know, the rest of the offices can be open. We don't have to, I don't see how we have to change. The town clerk always wanted to be here on Mondays, because, because, in order to feel safe. And I remember Lorraine said, for a while, you know, she didn't feel comfortable doing that unless the board was meeting, her being the only one open. But we're not afraid to meet by ourselves, so...
We always have.
Right, so if they want to meet, so I, I have no, I have no problems with them wanting to stay open late on Tuesday. I just am not on board with the half-hour lunch and the 4:30 in order to take all of Friday off.
The half-hour lunch, the hour lunch was supposed, was instituted so that, like, there's two people in the assessors, and... the assessors, um, and even in, um, Sandy and Deb, it was supposed to be so that the first half-hour, one would take lunch and then the second half-hour, the other would take lunch. So this way, they both take lunch at the same time. I mean, it does, you know, just cut down. I mean, I, for the convenience of the public, I am more than willing to try it for trial period. And, you know, with Priscilla's schedule, I would be Mondays, I'd, I'd probably walk out the door anyways to come.
Yeah.
Let's have it.
Uh, one thing I, I want to say about Fridays is, uh, you know, I've, I've worked around town halls for about fifteen years of my career and Friday at most town halls is pretty dead anyhow. Not, not very many people come in for permits or anything like that on a Friday. If there was an emergency inspection, I'm sure, uh, the, the town would, you know, the department heads would see to it that, you know, a Board of Health inspection to reopen a meeting, if, if they didn't do it, I'm sure the town administrator would hear about it, so.
Well, the, the health board now and other boards respond to emergencies.
I think, I think we've got good response from our department heads now that I wouldn't worry about.
I, I do wanna just, I do wanna piggyback on that for Priscilla because I think that she does raise a good point about the, if, if there's an emergency situation where a restaurant is closed. But if that were to happen, whether we were open on a Fri- uh, Friday or not, if it was to be over the weekend and we needed to reopen a restaurant, our department head would come in over the weekend as Nelson would come in, the Board of, the Health Inspector would, should come in. Fire Department, Police Department, they would respond to those emergencies during the weekend.
Even the health board had emergency calls late in the evening.
Now, routine business, I, I might agree with you about that, but I think if it was a, a situation of a business that was shut down on a, let's just say for a Thursday and, and was ready to reopen on a Friday or a Saturday or a Sunday or even a Monday holiday, I think for the most part, we would be able to accommodate that.
Okay, but here's, here's another point then. We had the Board of Health here, uh, what, two weeks ago, whatever it was, saying that they don't have enough hours in a day and they need more help and all this kinda stuff. Okay, are they gonna be able to do what they need to do at six o'clock at night, five o'clock, six o'clock at night in the wintertime? Are they gonna be able to do that? I mean.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
You know how they talked about they had to do all the, all the testing and all this kinda stuff? Are they able to do that at night?
We're not reducing the number of hours during the work week.
I understand that. My question isn't that. My question is, can you do those tests at night?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
That's my question. So I understand you're not changing the hours, I get that piece. But can they go test these things at night? Or are they gonna get, my question becomes actually, are they gonna get so backed up? That's my more, my bigger concern is how the community is gonna really be serviced and the businesses are gonna be really serviced. That's my concern.
I, I agree.
On that question, get backed up, they can take that time to do all this paperwork they talk about and all this updating on things they say need to be updated and everything. I know, Mary, uh, Chase hasn't.
I, I agree with Selectman Dowling. I, I feel that this should be a very easy swap, whereas one night a week, they stay late and then they leave early on Friday. And, uh, I just feel it's very important for the community for the town hall to be open five days a week and for emergency situations that can help the businesses and, and help the people. And I do feel that staying late one night a week is a big help to the community as well. So I kinda feel like if we stay late one night and we leave early Friday, it takes care of both of the arguments that we're complaining about, so.
Mary, you had your.
I, I one hundred percent ag- agree with what Chase just said. The whole idea of changing the hours was to accommodate residents. And this is one step forward, two steps back. Because we're closed all day Friday now and I just don't think that services, um, our, our residents, which was the reason we were changing our hours. And having Friday afternoon is, is off is great. I think staff, I think our staff is outstanding, don't get me wrong. But I also think that they have excellent working conditions too, um, all the way around with salary, with their hours, and to go down to a four-day work week, I think residents are gonna really push back on that because now we're less available when we were trying to be more available. And maybe your experience is that they're closed on, they're slow on Fridays, but even if there's a handful of people on a Friday, a builder that comes in that needs something in order to work on Saturday, I don't think that person should be waiting till Monday.
Well, if he's working on Saturday.
You've been up and working outside because you can't.
Well.
On Saturday and Sunday.
Okay, a burning permit then, or, or whatever. Um, you know, this, this was to just make, well.
Obviously, there's not gonna be a motion to go with this. So, um, Leon, could you maybe work the hours so that we can still get the thirty-five?
Well, I think that, I think that Selectman Dowling had a suggestion when she, um, spoke earlier. I think that if you, um, if you stayed at eight to four for the three days a week and going to seven, I don't wanna, I don't have your email in front of me.
No, that, that is it. Go to seven and now we have three hours to make up, to give back to them. And we close Friday afternoons for three hours. I think lunch is twelve to one, so we would close at noon.
Mm-hmm, right.
So, I mean, I, I'll be prepared to make a motion to see if it flies.
Wait a minute, if Harley, give it back.
Well, because technically they have from twelve to one off, or they can, or we can close at one and they can have from one to four off.
However, uh, can we?
Well, we gotta work out the hours so that it's thirty-five hours.
Can we go let Leon work out the hours? Are you good with that? And have him come up with a, a for a half a day Friday? Or do you have it worked out, Mary?
Well, I had it worked out. I don't have it right here on paper.
Do you have the hours worked out, so it's still thirty-five?
I think I can make a motion that guides him sufficiently so he knows. So let me just be prepared to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that, um, we change staff hours for a trial period of six months, beginning July first, to open on Tuesday nights until seven o'clock in return for closing on Friday afternoons, consistent with a thirty-five hour work week. And he can work those three hours out himself.
So you're saying Friday afternoons?
Right.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Wait a minute, you're keeping Monday, Wednesday and Thursday the same, eight to four?
Yes, it has to be. The only reason those changed was to take all of Friday off. Nothing, nothing, you know, it's a very easy swap, nothing changed. The town hall opens at eight and closes at four with the exception of Tuesdays, which it's open until seven, in return for Friday afternoons off, consistent with a thirty-five hour work week.
I second that.
Okay, Leon, it's doing.
I'm, I'm looking at your email that you sent me because I think you had it outlined.
I just respectfully disagree. I think the public would be better served with later hours on Monday, Wednesday and Thursday than having Friday morning when nothing really happens in a town hall.
What's four thirty gonna give them? A half an hour? What's that gonna do for anybody if they get home at five o'clock? It does nothing.
But you're, well, then make it, uh, eight to five.
It still does nothing. Yeah, it still does nothing. I mean, the towns that we're looking at that are closed.
A lot of people come, a lot of people come into the town hall late in the afternoon trying to get their bills paid or their, um.
But the town halls that we're looking at here, Spencer's that has financial problems and has to close, they don't even, they don't even have enough hours. And you're looking at Douglas, Holland, um, I mean, some of these communities are so small. And I, I think, I personally would rather see it, try it for a half a day because I'm gonna tell you, I spoke to a few residents this past weekend asking their opinion, but these are people that I know well and I could feel comfortable to approach. And the overall feeling wasn't positive. And they, the comment one person made to me is, well, isn't that just dandy? We're gonna give raises and now we're going to four days a week to people who don't even live in town and support our town. And I thought, okay, well, that's an opinion. I did ask for it. I did ask for it. I put myself out there. So, but my point is, is that the people that I, that I did talk to on an overall, were not happy. They, and that's why I believe the taxpayers are, have paid for this building and are paying its renovations. The taxpayers should decide how they wanna be serviced, not five people. And I will tell you, two business people said to me, Priscilla, with all due respect to you and all the four members of the board, I don't think five people should decide how to run the town hall. That you should bring it to the people. I'm just telling you what's out there, you know?
No, that's out there, but people tend to forget that they elect us to make some decisions.
Yeah, but we go to them, we, we, we ask for two-thirds, uh, on, when we do a zoning change, we have a two-thirds majority. So, I mean, something like this affects everybody, you know?
Did the hours work out?
So you seconded it, so if we try it for six months, we'll get feedback from people one way or another.
And I think we should have a survey. Can I, uh, I don't wanna add to your thing.
No, a survey may be online, but.
Online or at the town hall, just a piece of paper. So when you come in at night, you say, does, do you like these hours? What do you think? And get people's opinion.
It's not broad enough though, the people that come in.
Well, you, you can word a survey appropriately, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, but you can do Survey Monkey.
I think that, uh, uh, you, Madam Chair. I think that what Mary's suggestion was, was to keep it as an hour lunch period and move it from seven thirty to seven as the, as the late hour.
That was my motion, three hours more.
And then move the, the Sa- the Friday hours from, uh, you had eight to eleven thirty.
Well, that, yeah, that.
That would be the, um.
Yeah, three hours, look, I mean, they're working an extra three hours, so they should get three hours off on Friday afternoon. My only, it would, would've been one o'clock because we usually close at four. But I didn't know if, if by doing the hours, they needed their lunch hour from twelve to one. So in which case it would have to close at twelve. That was, that was the only flexible time. Is it twelve o'clock they close or one?
Well, it would be, it would be, you had, just going off of your email, which I think you did a good job of.
Leon, just, just add, just.
Oh, wait a minute.
We're staying an extra three hours on, on Tuesdays, so just subtract that from Friday afternoons.
So keep, keeping the hours closing at four.
If you take seven hours a day, you take the eight to four and you take an hour for lunch, seven hours a day, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, that gives you twenty-one hours. On Tuesday, if you're working eight to seven, that's eleven hours, take off the one hour for lunch, it's ten hours. You add twenty-one and ten, you get thirty-one. Four hours on Friday gives you thirty-five.
Right.
Yeah.
There you go.
And, and her only point, her only question at the time was, if we were going to, uh, make it seven as opposed to seven thirty, you were suggesting either going from eight to eleven or eight to noon.
I think seven is better because now we're not overlapping with those boards. You know, like they, they wanna stay late on Tuesdays and move their boards, then we shouldn't be open until seven thirty because they're not gonna be able to start their board meeting until seven.
So with all due respect to your motion, then your motion would be to reflect the eight to noon.
Okay, eight to noon, okay, okay, so.
Because you did have it all written out, well, quite nicely.
Colleen, you want me to make that motion again? Okay, so I'll, I'll. We were in discussion, so nobody voted on it, okay. So I'm gonna make a mo- motion that we change staff hours to Tuesdays from eight to seven and from Mondays, from, I'm sorry, from Fridays, eight until noon, commencing July first for a six-month period of time.
For clarification, that would be effective July first?
Yes, I didn't say that, effective July one.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor of that motion? Five to nothing? Now, we're not going to touch the changing of the board's hour, board's day.
Not ours. I'm not changing our board meeting. Is that what you asked?
Yeah, I mean.
No, no, I mean, we don't have to be open when everybody else is.
We never were. When Lorraine was here, we always met on Monday and nobody was downstairs.
And I honestly, I don't, I don't think that, you know, is, is fair to Priscilla who works nights. You know, that's her livelihood, so she wouldn't be able to serve.
The problem is that we have to put our hours in a semester prior to. So when I picked my hours four months ago, um.
Based it on?
I kept away from Monday.
We get it, yeah, we get it.
Okay, Leon, we have that last item that came up.
I was gonna do that on another new business, but I'm happy to do that when.
No, no, I didn't, didn't look at the schedule. Okay, next we have, um, old business. Priscilla?
Um, yeah, I have a couple of questions. Any news, I don't, and I don't know if you know this yet or not, Leon, so, on the liquor permit for Lucky Mart, I happened to be there the other day and a gentleman asked me and I said.
He comes in all the time. Yeah, the, the, uh, state rep and the state senator have filed the legislation at our request. They needed the certified, uh, this, this is weeks ago, okay? They needed the certified, um, uh, certificate of vote, I guess, from the, uh, from the town clerk. They received that, uh, when they asked for it. It just has to go through the legislative process. Uh, it is kind of a late file, meaning that most of the time legislative filings happen in the fall and this is kinda coming in, in the spring. And this is an election year, so it's a early, well, it's a, it, they recess at the end of July. So I don't know, and I told them from the get-go, I don't know if they're gonna get this done before the end of this calendar year.
Okay.
They might be able to get, and they're, right now, what are they doing? They're all doing budget stuff, right? So some of these are non-controversial. These types of issues are usually non-controversial. Whether or not they take it up before the end of their recess or whether they take it up under, um, under, um, the rules, they have the ability to take up non-controversial items without a full session of the House or Senate in play. It is, guess that I don't know if I can answer your question, but the gentleman does come in and see me periodically. Uh, but I told him from the get-go, this is the wrong year to ask for that because it is an election year and they recess at the end of July.
I'll, I'll tell him then because I did go in the other day and he asked me. And, um, I, I'll go back and I'll, because I said I would ask, so I wanna follow up.
I am still cautiously optimistic. Sometimes at the end of the legislative session, they do a flurry of, of last second votes to try to get things done before the end of the, before they recess.
Yeah.
But I, I, I can't answer your question.
No, that's okay. Actually, you did. You, you did by telling me what you see it as happening, so you actually did answer it and I appreciate it.
Sometimes they might even lump like twelve of these things for multiple communities, all as one bill, and try to get them all passed at the same time.
I'd rather tell him to delay and have him be pleasantly surprised, you know, rather than telling him something good and then it turns out the other way. The other, I only have one other. And, um, I got calls from parents that have kids in Little League and, and I'm not quite versed in all of this, but, um, did anybody contact you about, um, the fact that the fields, the town fields are gonna close June fourth, the week of June fourth?
I did have one gentleman contact me about that.
Okay, because the parents are up in arms because that's playoffs and then into tournaments.
Yeah.
And they, they're, they're up in arms.
Yeah, I did get one phone call about that. I did, uh, I did speak to, um, uh, I mean, obviously that's something that falls under Recreation. I did direct them to speak with Recreation and I, I also spoke to Recreation to get some clarification on what they were doing. I, I don't have an answer from, from, when I spoke to them from last week as, as to any change in their policy. But at their last Recreation Committee meeting, I understand that they voted to close the fields on the day of town meeting so that people could be available to attend the town meeting.
I know.
I'm not gonna comment as to whether or not it's a good or bad decision.
There's a lot of upset parents, um, so.
I can relay that message to the Recreation Committee as well.
Please, that would be good. Yeah, that would be great. Thank you. That's it for me.
Hey, Chase, any old business?
No.
Mike?
No.
Mary?
No.
And I have none new. Priscilla?
No.
Chase?
No.
Mike?
No.
Mary?
This is kinda new, old, but maybe on a, on a summer agenda through the chair, if she's willing, we can put that, those doc regulation, uh, discussion. I didn't wanna do it today because he came with their concern. But I did have like a sentence, I did have some language that I wanted to suggest, which was kinda along the lines of what Chase was saying, to make our regulations a little clearer and a little more fair. So, I mean, I, we may or may not adopt that language, but it's worth looking at.
Yeah, we, we, um, it, it's actually been on my to-do list to do this. So sometime in July or August, uh, I will have a agenda item where we will discuss, review the current regulations. I think I gave you folks a copy of those current regulations. You know, maybe this is something that we can involve the, um, the Lakes Association in as well about reviewing. about reviewing the changes. I mean, that's what we appoint these people for, presumably, as well, so.
Well, I don't know, there are charges in the general bylaws, so we can look at that.
Well, yes, it is on our to-do list.
Okay, good, that's my own.
Okay, and I have no new.
Madam Chair, I have one new item to bring to your attention this evening. This morning, I received word from Ty &amp; Bond. This goes back to the McGilpin Road issue. The McGilpin Road study has been completed. There, in your, the packet that I gave to you at the beginning of this meeting, I've given to you the draft document of their study for water supply alternatives for the McGilpin Road. I'm not asking you folks to have any vote on that document tonight. I know you're just getting it. However, I am going to be asking the Board of Selectmen to authorize the town administrator and the DPW director to engage Ty &amp; Bond's geotechnical engineers to do some soil borings, utilizing the funds that we have received from the town, from, I'm, I'm sorry, from the Commonwealth, in a number not to exceed $40,000, to include site mobilization, demobilization, soil boring, samples, observation, and a police detail. We believe that it will take about a week and a half to two weeks to complete these borings. It would be very helpful information in determining what our next courses of action would be. I feel it is imperative that the Board of Selectmen authorize us to move forward in this. Our, as you know, these state funds are going to expire at the end of the fiscal year. And we think that we can get this critical component completed prior to the end of this fiscal year. So with the board's permission, I would like to have Greg and I, moving forward, engaging Ty &amp; Bond to complete those studies for a number not to exceed $40,000.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to engage Ty &amp; Bond for soil borings in an amount not to exceed $40,000.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Yeah, the, the borings are clearly for potential, to, to find out whether there's ledge there, or...
Correct.
They're not for sampling soil, for contaminants, or anything like that.
As I understand, no.
I just wanted to make that clear to the public, that it's just for future construction purposes, and not...
Correct. So what we'd be able to do is give the Board of Selectmen refined data with regards to the cost of their project. It's very similar to the recreational field project.
Yes, if we had this information for the recreational fields, we could make a closer decision.
Right.
I don't think I can get the state to pay for that over at the Tom Barnfield.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing.
And, and just so that you know, I, I haven't had a, I've had a brief presentation about the contents of that report. I think when Greg comes to our next meeting, which is, which will be actually the next meeting that we have here, I think that Greg and I will be prepared to have a longer conversation with you folks about this study that was given to us today. Madam Chair, I have no other business before the Board of Selectmen this evening.
Okay. Correspondence?
Oh, yes. Okay, dated May 1, policy on appointment procedures for the Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator. Replacement policy, A1 section, for the appointment procedures, manual as voted by the BOS at their April 17 meeting. May 1, charter communications on upcoming changes. Effective on or after June 4, 2018, several changes will be made to the Westport lineup. May 1, Old Sturbridge Village, withdrawal of an application for a retail liquor license for Old Sturbridge Inn and Reader Family Lodges. May 10, The Last Green Valley, an invitation to the 2018 annual meeting on Thursday, June 7, at Camp Woodstock YMCA. Cost is $25 a person, RSVP by Friday, June 1. May 10, Town of Sturbridge Conservation Commission, notice of intent, notification to a butters, notification to a butters under the Mass Wetlands Protection Act. A and R by Burton Engineering on behalf of Peter O'Connell, Doughty Road. Construction of single-family homes. Public hearing held on May 17 at Center Office Building. Main Street, second floor, Sturbridge Mass, 6:45 PM. May 17, the CMR-PC Annual Ballot for Fiscal Year 2019. Ballot completed by Selectman Delegate Michael Supranat. May 17, Commonwealth of Mass, Department of Telecommunications and Cable, regarding a petition of charter communications to establish and adjust the basic service tier programming, equipment, and installation rates for the communities in Mass served by charter.
Any questions on those? Sorry.
No, that I'm done.
Okay, and then I think you all got the envelope in your mailbox from the Juni High on the Memorial Day Ceremony at Veterans Breakfast on Friday, May 25. If anyone intends on going, you can respond. Did you all get the envelope?
Yeah, I already emailed them.
That is an amazing thing, if you haven't been before. It's quite an event that they put forward.
Okay. approval of minutes. Do you have minutes on May 7? I just had a few slipped words typo on page 3, under discussion in the middle there. Second line, first line down, under the heading, we don't have Bree's last name. Okay, and then probably at the end of that, we should summarize that there was no motion and vote to reconsider the warrant article, because that's why they came in. Okay, and then on page 4, the two lines at the bottom, the next to last, where in the middle it says, "N. M. Supranat stated that project cannot, should be, be put out to bid." So B and two. Okay, that's all I had. Did anyone else have anything?
Mary? I've got a few changes. On page 1, on the update for Barrett Farms, second line down, it says, "However, too many trees, approximately 200, which included brush and some trees that would have been taken down." I actually asked about that. It's 200 that were in violation. So I would say approximately 200 in violation, which did not include brush and some trees that would have been taken down, or removed. Okay? And then at the end of that sentence, "As a result, they have filed with the Concom for the violation." Could you insert the following sentence, Colleen? "With respect to the tree violation, M. Dowling stated that she hoped subcontractors would be monitored more closely in the future," and was told that they would. And then the last line, "The town administrator reminded the board members that in voting for any extension, blah, 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 they, in the event another big project applies, they will have to wait." Change "will" to "may," because we may have capacity for another big project, too. So that was... And then on page 4, second paragraph, "M. Dowling stated that the Shepherd Parcel, Plimpton Property and Town Barn Fields were all up for consideration." I don't know if I said quite that, but add "at one point in time." And then insert this sentence, "But the Shepherd Parcel is subject to CRs now, which do not allow active recreation." Okay, 'cause that's not up for consideration anymore. And then on the third line, where it ends, "The town will not get all, get all that they would like in a recreation field in terms of acreage, central location, et cetera, add "at any one location." And that's all I have.
Excuse me, could you repeat?
Yep.
The whole thing about the Shepherd Plimpton?
Yeah, okay, so I'll just read it all. "M. Dowling stated that the Shepherd Parcel, Plimpton Property and Town Barn Fields were all up for consideration." And then it was a period, just put "at one point in time," period. New sentence, "But the Shepherd Parcel is subject to CRs now," conservation restrictions, "which do not allow active recreation." And I'm not trying to be detailed. It's just, when you read it, it makes it sound like the Shepherd Parcel is still on the table, and it isn't.
Is that it, Mary?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, anyone else?
Just on page 3, with the Board of Health. If you could just add, it says, "C. Kobinski stated he was not gonna make a motion tonight, and would like to see an article presented at a special town meeting when more questions were answered."
Okay, anyone else? Okay, is there a motion to...
I...
Oops, Mike?
Yeah, I just had one comment on page 2, under the public hearing for National Grid. I just wanted in there that I stated, "M. Supranat stated that the line could be constructed with one fewer pole." I, I just don't like to approve poles that are not necessary. It's just, just a thing. But we, that's the way it was designed, so we approved it that way.
You definitely said it. You definitely said that, yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion then to approve as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, Citizens Forum?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's usually the most non-controversial vote of the night.
What's going on with that?
It's the most controversial vote of the evening. I almost didn't get a second. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
See you at town meeting.
That's right.
We will have...
We'll see you at the parade.
Oh, that's right, we'll see you at the parade.
Oh, the parades first.
Parade, yeah.
You gotta walk, right?
Yeah.
Oh, we, did we decide?
I'll let you know, I don't have any business to have you folks really debate about. I might just have you folks come at 6:30, unless something dramatic happens. But I'll let you know in advance. We have, usually have a Selectmen's meeting prior to town meeting in the cafeteria across the hall. But right now, I don't have a lot. We do have to talk a little bit about the, who's gonna make the motion and second it for the medical, I mean, the recreational marijuana. But aside from that, we don't really have a lot of business.
Yeah, so 6:30 unless if...
Unless you hear otherwise.
Okay.
So is 6:30, so we are having a half an hour meeting? Oh, yeah, no, okay.
Just in case, yeah.
Or it could be longer. It could be six. But we're definitely at least having a half. Yeah, so we can...
We were post at least for 6:30.
Okay, got it.
Sounds good.
You know where we meet for the parade, at the Old Fire Station?
At the Old Fire Station? And what time?
Well...
What time do we?
Does it step off at 9:30, or 9?
Oh, God.
Oh, I'll, I'll get you the, I don't have the schedule written right this minute.
Yeah.
I thought it was they step off at 9:30.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Usually they're, they start assembling around 9:00 AM. It's pretty...
We'll send you the schedule.
We hang out there for about 10, 15 minutes before we stop marching, get warmed up, do stretching exercises.
Whoever's in charge decides where we're going. I remember it was a little chaotic.